Cool. Well, then, uh, then here we go. Welcome, everybody, to Town Hall number forty-eight. It's May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. And we're joined today by quite a nice group where I'm looking to find the list. We're joined today by Fly, Cran, Tommy, August, Felix, Ian, Judith, Mikasa, Sly, Stephen, and Defresh DeFi. Welcome, everybody. Um, based on, uh, last week's, uh, feedback on the, on the tunnel structure, uh, we'll do things a little different. Uh, we'll try to keep the workgroup updates, uh, quite concise and short. Um, simply covering the, the most important parts. And then after the covering all the workgroups, uh, there will be some time for, for questions. Feel free to put them in chat in the meantime. Uh, but yeah, trying to keep it a little bit, um, consolidated. So, yeah, after all the updates, there's room for questions on these updates. Uh, but then at least we, uh, we reserved enough time for, uh, for the updates to be covered, uh, properly. Um, and that there will be quite a lot of room for, uh, for open topics. Um, also by consolidating the workgroup updates into, um, broadly speaking, twenty-two, maximum of thirty minutes total, uh, so maximum the first half. Uh, yeah, that leaves, uh, another half of the meeting for, uh, actually having nice discussions with each other. Uh, yeah, quick reminder on, uh, for those joining in for the first time or watching this for the first time, um, what the ambassador program even is. Um, we aim to provide a, a structure where community members can, um, learn about the Singularity Net ecosystem and also contribute to its growth and contribute to its mission of, um, realizing decentralized AGI. And we did this in a whole bunch of self-organizing workgroups, um, focusing on themes like, uh, marketing, videos, governance, all type of, uh, topics. And, yeah, in the meantime, we get to, uh, meet nice people and have some fun together. And I also switched around a little bit, um, which was really good feedback to switch dimensions, um, instead of having them at the complete ending of the, of the meeting slash video, uh, to have them at the start, so everybody gets them. That's a quite a nice one. Uh, so first of all, well, the, the, the structure has changed a little bit of the, of this meeting. And I do want to put a little reminder to the, um, Supervisory Council ideation phase. This closes, uh, Thursday end of day, and this takes place on the Sway platform. We had quite a nice session, uh, earlier today with the Supervisory Council. Uh, recording of that should hopefully be live tomorrow. And, yeah, as I said, um, until Thursday end of day, there's, um, room for ideation. And then all the ideas and, and comments and discussion gets, um, consolidated into a, into a document, which then also will be shared for, for feedback. And that will, uh, provide, um, yeah, the framework for the Supervisory Council. Then I also want to point out that, uh, KWC opened for the Kojita Protocol Token Generation Event. For those interested in, uh, in tracer coins, the, which is a crypto asset similar, but not quite the same as stable coins. Um, for more details, uh, simply check Twitter, because there's a lot of, uh, mentions on that. And I do want to put, uh, put a reminder to coming Thursday, nineteen UTC, there's a deep funding town hall. And, uh, I think there will be a breakout room on, uh, Supervisory Council giving some preliminary, uh, thoughts there. And maybe I can ask the room, are there more signups right now? Is anybody aware of that?
Can check, hold on. I'm talking to one person, uh, about room. I can check the sheet, hold on.
Okay, cool, cool. All right, um. Yeah, well, that concludes the mentions. That brings us to the updates on the workgroups. Um, starting with the process guilds. The process guild meetings take place on Tuesday, right after the town hall at nineteen UTC. And today we're not joined by, um, Taffo for a little update on there. Um. Makes me wonder if I can quickly find what's on the menu for tonight. What usually happens is, uh, Taffo joins in and then, uh, pre shares a little, uh, sneak preview on what we're gonna do. And the next calendar wise, uh, brings us to Wednesday, uh, starting at, uh, nineteen UTC with a incubation workshop. And can I ask for a little update on, uh, what happened last week and what we'll be doing this week? I think Fly, Cardano.
Well, I'm stuck in the other document. We have Felix leading, uh, a breakout room in the deep on Town Hall on Thursday. No other signup, just, yeah. If anyone else would like to lead a room, more than welcome.
Absolutely. Uh, that makes me want to sneak in a little mention of the, of the calendar at the bottom of this slide. Um, because the, the calendar event for the tunnel also has the link for signing up, uh, breakout rooms.
Yes, I can put that in the chat. After I've found incubation.
Awesome. I did not intend to switch slides. There we are.
Yeah, last week in incubation, we basically went over, um, Stephen's archive proposal, uh, for most of the meeting. Um, there wasn't enough time at the end to talk about, uh, other questions, um, including, uh, voting, which can kind of, which we identified at the end of the meeting. That this is kind of the process that needs to be established in order to move the, uh, process forward in terms of implementing, um, guilds and workgroups and enabling community members to work on projects. Yes. Cran, would you like to give some thoughts on this week's incubation?
Yeah, maybe this week's incubation, we can kind of go over more of kind of the purpose of the ambassador program and we can just have no, on that.
As always, incubation is, uh, very grassroots workshop where we're trying to really, um, open source wisdom and knowledge of the community. So it's a workgroup that aims to incubate ideas, uh, which are then developed for the benefit of the program and, uh, the mission of the program. Um, so anyone is welcome to come to incubation meetings, incubation workgroup. It is the first half of a two-hour session. Uh, the first hour, hour being incubation, like developing ideas on a very grassroots level, and then going to strategy, which is from a ten thousandth of a year.
Thanks a lot. Um, well, on, uh, on strategy, um. Tommy, can I ask you on a little add that?
Absolutely, sir. Love to provide, uh, updates. We did a fifteen-minute on, um, the value of using an agenda to run effective meetings. Uh, it was really, uh, from an OG, uh, standpoint. And I put out a, a document to create a best practices on, uh, running meetings or facilitating meetings, uh, in this virtual world. And that will be picked up today, uh, if the ideation in incubation does not spill, uh, not today, tomorrow in strategy, if, um, uh, incubation ideation about the ambassador guild does not spill over. After the fifteen minutes, there were a couple, there was discussion, a couple of, uh, inputs and insights. And then we moved, uh, turned it over to Felix, uh, for, uh, the, the governance document. Um, that was discussed, worked on, and, uh, it was, um, I believe morphed off into a, a governance workshop, which met for the first time, and I wasn't up for it, I apologize, uh, at eight AM, um, on, on the Tuesday. And I don't know if it's gonna continue. Perhaps Felix, um, though he says he's traveling, could confirm that.
Um, I think there's definitely more work to be done there. Um. Not sure if Felix will respond.
I think he mentioned at the, is this the governance workshop, Tommy?
Uh, yes, the, the governance workshop that was supposed to be scheduled, or was scheduled for this AM. I, I did not it.
Yeah, I think, I'd wanna speak for him, but I think he intended, he intends to run the meeting at the same time next week.
Good, good. That way we can continue the work, uh, the very valuable, uh, work that was started on the, uh, governance document for the SNET ambassadors. And please join us, uh, everybody is welcome and a document out there that, uh, is being community edited.
Awesome. Thanks a lot for that. Um, that brings us to the Treasury Guild meeting. Um, that makes me dig deep in what was covered during that meeting. It's so hard when Taffo is not around to, to recap. Um, broadly speaking, for, uh, for, for people interested in, uh, Treasury Guilds. So it's all relating to rewards and, and distribution system of those rewards. Um, if you're interested in, in joining, uh, the meetings on that, the, these take place on Thursdays, fifteen-thirtieth UTC. Um, that brings us to AI Sandbox. Um. I guess with Felix, uh, traveling, that brings me back to Fly.
Yes. Yes. Uh, cool. Um. AI Sandbox last week was quite fun. Um. Uh, yeah. As always, it's quite a ad hoc, uh, ad hoc workshop where we're kind of developing the skills of our community members as, um, as prompters using GPT and other kind of AI, um, tools, so that we can kind of enable ourselves to move forward, um, yeah, on our community mission. Um, there's not one scheduled for this week, but there's one, uh, the following week on Thursday afternoon at one PM UTC. Uh, yes. And it's a, it's basically a session to play, yeah, a session to play and like onboard ourselves onto these, uh, skills.
Thank you. And that brings us to the Friday block of, um, three meetings, which, um, of which the marketing guild meeting, uh, turned into bi-weekly. Um, so it did take place last week and won't be taking place this week, but the next week. Um, seeing both Konichi and Rojo are not in the room, let me double check. Seems accurate. Yes. Um, I personally only attended the marketing guild session there, not the writers and video sessions. Um. Cardano, can I ask you for a little update on the marketing guild?
Yeah, I know, let's see, in video, we went over a lot of the recent submissions of videos. Um. Who else was that video? Did we touch on anything else? I think, I think most of the time we went over everybody's videos, there's at least probably seven or eight submissions total, if you include the four or five shorts. And then in writers, we discussed rewards and we went over the recent Nuneau article that was created. We talked about how articles could be due in by Wednesdays to leave room for editing by Fridays, uh, where the writers or the editors could give an update on the article and discuss. Then the article could be posted by the end of the week on Medium and socials. And I can dig up that rewards document and post it in the chat here after, after this update. Uh, marketing wise, not too much happened there. We, we touched on workgroup leads. Sway has been really stepping up in writers to help out. Um, I saw Rojo made a post, I think today or yesterday in video about kind of making it more where everybody can kind of, uh, kick in and help on things. I know he's looking for somebody to help with social media and, uh, a task manager as well. So if anybody's interested in that, reply to Rojo. And then, yeah, we'll start meeting bi-weekly in the marketing guild and you can check out the ambassador calendar to keep updated. There's video in writers workgroup every Friday, beginning with video at thirteen UTC, writers at fourteen UTC. And then marketing guild will meet next week, May twenty-sixth, Friday at fifteen UTC.
Awesome, thanks. Um, yeah, then yesterday, um, so on Mondays, uh, there's the educational workgroup, which I did, wasn't, not able to attend. Um. I assume it did take place. Um. So the, the way I understood it, uh, Defresh, you, were you able to attend? Because I, I think not, right?
No, I was in the middle of getting, uh, some extensive dental work done and, uh, will be this week as well. Um, so I wasn't able to host the meeting. I asked, uh, Tommy to do that. But I did pre-record a video suggesting a, uh, high school, um, AI-generated image contest to be ideated and possibly embarked on starting, uh, maybe September, um, which is the school year in the US here. And I'd like to follow up the conversation on that next week when I am able to attend.
Awesome. Uh, well, Tommy, since you, you hosted that session, anything to add there?
Um, not, not really. Um, other, other than this issue with, um, signing in, I, we had a hard time logging into the Zoom account. So the, the meeting, um, started a half hour late, which I apologize to everybody for. Uh, it was, um, it was, uh, a, a good meeting. Uh, his video, um, was, was, you know, poignant. And, uh, it's a, uh, it's a big project that he has conceptualized, uh, the, the Fry DeFi, uh, about trying to reach out, since we are an AI, um, organization, reach out to high school students, um, to get them to use AI-generated art, have an art contest, um, that is, uh, ultimately judged, if we can, by, uh, Sophia or one of her siblings, um, and return the artwork, uh, to the students, thus, um, creating, uh, uh, wallets, an increase in Cardano wallets for all of, uh, the students that enter it and perhaps one for their parents, uh, so we can educate them on how to use, uh, wallets in the system, how to use NFTs and ultimately how to use AI for doing art. And, and to me, it's a, it's a fantastic concept. Um, and it would be, you, you know, as we were talking earlier, uh, in the pre-meeting, it would be reaching out to, uh, Cardano and, uh, uh, SNET Foundation, uh, looking for some underwriting. So it was, um, it's impressive. So join next week educational meeting where it'll be expanded on.
Thanks for that. That sounds very cool. Uh, that brings us to the archival workgroup. Stephen, what's good?
Yeah, thanks, Peter. Um, well, we continue in the process of, uh, trialing a new workgroup process and taking it through different workgroups. So the archival workgroup, um, went to the incubation workgroup workshop. Um, so thanks to Fly and Cardano where it was discussed and, uh, in detail. Um, then it went on to Treasury Guild for a brief discussion there of how workgroups may, um, um, form and agree budgets. And, uh, budgeting principle was agreed going forward, you know, and, um, now this week, I'm, well, I've been archiving, um, there's still a bit of a backlog on that. Um, but putting together a team preparation for a first bi-weekly, hopefully starting next week, um, where we'll be meeting every two weeks for working meetings on. And the meetings will be divided into, like, a Kanban board where we just look at what needs to be done. And the second part of the meeting, hopefully, will be more educational. It'll be, um, how our hands are on using Gitbox and stuff like that. So that's where we are. Thanks, Peter.
Cool. Looking forward for that. Hopefully next week.
Yeah, yeah, hopefully, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, hopefully next week, yeah. That's all I was gonna say.
All right, that, uh, does bring us to the last on the list, but not the least one, it's the broadcast ideation workgroup. Um, I, it was on the Monday evening, I wasn't able to attend, but I think Fly?
Yeah, broadcast was, uh, very brief meeting on Monday, uh, basically concerning, um, the difficulties, basically discussing the difficulties about broadcasting right now in the ambassador program with a lack of, uh, purpose and a kind of, um, uh, direct mission for the ambassador program, which is a kind of theme. Uh, and concerns with being, or like, uh, discussions on being a public-facing figure for, uh, as an ambassador, uh, the kind of repercussions of that and some concerns about, um, about this. Uh, we, this led on to a bit of discussion on the, uh, like, questions for the lawyer, um, which we hope will be, like, uh, resolved soon with, um, the lawyer from the foundation. Um, yeah, that was about it really. And then it just turned into, it was quite a brief meeting, then just turned into a discussion, um, between a few people that were there. Uh, and also, I, I'll just recap on the AI Sandbox, because I totally blanked when you asked me earlier, but it was quite a cool session. And, uh, during the AI Sandbox, we worked through prompting GPT-four, um, on the development of proposals on the Sway platform for the Sing, the Supervisory Council, um, plat, uh, portal. And with the aim of, like, making some proposals, uh, with the aid of this AI, uh, LLM to, yeah, basically crafting prompts and developing material from that. So one is up on the platform as, uh, ambassador program. And we have some more which will be added this week, uh, before the deadline this Thursday.
Awesome. All right, uh, looking at the clock, I, uh, would like to observe that the recaps have been covered in the first half of the meeting. Uh, so I'm happy about that. Um. Uh, yeah, well, that, that, an additional reminder on the public calendar, um, I'll also add it to the YouTube description, uh, for those interested in not missing out any of the meetings. Um, that does leave, uh, the remainder of the meeting, the, the second half, uh, for an open round on, um. Well, any questions or, uh, on the previously shared updates or alternatively random ideas for what we should be doing, um, in the broader sense. Uh, we did collect one, um, topic to, to potentially discuss. And that, that could be, um, the interaction of the ambassador program, uh, with other spinoffs in the ecosystem. Uh, but also very happy to, uh, see if there's any questions or, or topics we should be discussing.
I can start us off with a couple of questions that came up in the pre-Town Hall, uh, party, um, between a few of us. One was about defining the value that we bring as a community. Um, really kind of wondering about how we add value to this, uh, foundation or ecosystem. Um, with the mind of, okay, what is the essential thing that we're providing this value and how can we provide it to others in the ecosystem to get more, like, for instance, funding from other sources outside the allocation?
I have one project that I'm, I'm trying to work through it. I, um, I have a website that I built and I'm trying to reconfigure it. It's not like a hundred percent I'm gonna, we're gonna be able to do this, but it's basically a, um, a blockchain research website that's constructed just like Amazon, where like you have, Amazon has products. And if you think about the research as being the product and then other people can rate, uh, your research. So like you put in to a, a, uh, a form, it's a, it's a form. And then it goes up onto this thing that anybody can look through and other people can rate your submission. And then the highest rated submissions go to the top. And it's just like a collective blockchain research website that I feel like could benefit the, this whole, anybody on, in the ecosystem. And if I can get everything squared away, I'm down to just sort of put this somewhere where everybody can use it, but we don't really have a central place. I just don't know where we would make it accessible for everyone. Does anyone have any ideas of where we could put it?
Well, the way I understand it, it's, it would be simply be a URL or?
Yeah, it's, so I had, it's, it's a website and, yeah, we could just link to it somewhere. But it'd be nice if, if we had like a central, I think I said this in one of the other meetings, like a central hub that had like one website where we have a bunch of things that people can use, which would get people into the, like, we have a, say, like an ambassador site, for instance. And then on that site, there's links to a bunch of different things, something like that. I don't know if there's plans to do that, but.
Well, there have been since the very start. That would be, I mean, Gitbook comes to mind. Um. It has been backed up, uh, lately, uh, by Stephen's, uh, archive, uh, workgroup. Uh, but I do think that would be a decent, a decent place.
Yeah, I mean, I s, I mean, the Gitbooks are, we're talking to the, um, the, some of the people who want, may want to get involved in the working group. There is discussion about people stepping forward to keep the ambassadors', um, manual or the ambassadors' Gitbook up more up to date, so we can use that as a user guide. Um, but as for a website, um, it, there are options. it, there are options for hosting the website using our repository, which we could then have a singularity net, our um, um, URL, and then the website backs up to the repository. Or you could host the, under your, you know, all the group here could just make a decision about a domain name and host it in the cloud or wherever, you know. But the, the responsibility obviously for updating the website would have to be uh, owned and managed as well.
Yeah, very true. I'm not sure if we've got WordPress experts, uh, experts in the, in the house. Um, I'm not. Um, that's why, for me personally, something like Gitbook is just very straightforward and simple. Um, but also very open to um, if there's um, people that, that feel like that's something they want to, to organize. We could definitely go for a website, which is not a Gitbook. Um, but then again, to, to wait on that to develop um, before sharing the link, that would be not the proper way around. Uh, I'm curious, I, I think Alex, if you can, uh, I guess initially simply putting it in the Ambassador Program Discord channel would, would work out. So then at least people can have a, have a check there.
Yeah, right now it's, I just switched the, the URL over to the site. It hasn't, the two things haven't connected yet. So it says it takes up to 24 hours to work. So I'm just waiting and then I gotta log into the WordPress thing and I don't really know what I'm doing in there. So might take me a few days to get it figured out, but once I do, then I'm, I'll just share it with you guys and then we can go from there, see what's up.
Hmm, cool. Yeah, I'm curious. Um, well, circling back to um, what Fly mentioned on um, defining the value we can bring to um, as a community, to the foundation and also the broader ecosystem. Um. Wouldn't anybody have some initial thoughts there perhaps?
Yeah, I think, I think it kind of goes into kind of defining our purpose, which is something we can start digging back into. Because some, sometimes it seems like our purpose is to help, you know, spread knowledge about Singularity Net and the ecosystem. And then sometimes it feels like we're not exactly enabled to do so fully. Like um, you know, Cryptofly did a couple of really cool videos, like one on Kojido. But right now, we don't have much connections or ties or any lanes of communication with the foundation and these spinoff projects. So we can't really make those connections. And then we also don't want to be some form of middleman for people that want to make content about these spinoffs, right? I, I don't think we or the Ambassador Program should get any kickback for her putting in the work and making the videos, for instance. So that, that's been something on my mind is kind of our purpose. And it's seeming with SingComDAO coming out, that it really needs to be incubated. The Supervisory Council and the SingComDAO, everything from hosting meetups with the community and having these discussions and figuring out where to go with SingComDAO. Um, it would be really cool to be a community-led initiative. Something that we need to think about is the Ambassador Program gets point five percent of this phase two allocation. So if SingComDAO is wanting to be an actual initiative, we're gonna need some professionals, some people that have written white papers before, they've gone through the legal side of things, we'll also need legal counsel. So some questions that wrap into that as well are if we're seeking legal counsel for SingComDAO or even the Ambassador Program, and we want to create some form of governance framework, white paper, we're gonna need funds to do that. If you look at the phase two allocation, uh, it's, it's hard to make sense if point five percent of that phase two allocation should go towards that. And I think we need to have a broader conversation, which includes having more connections or any form of communication with the foundation. We, we do talk to Ian and Peter often, but a lot of people come into the Ambassador Program because they see these really cool people and great minds in the Singularity Net Foundation, working on projects. And we've existed for a year now and it feels like these people aren't very involved. So I'm just trying to get my head wrapped around what our purpose is, because I feel like if we're enabled, we could do a lot of things. So is it somewhere between us spreading uh, and helping spread what Singularity Net is? AI, getting people comfortable with what and how the world is changing? Is it helping incubate the SingCom Community DAO? Is it somewhere in between or somewhere outside of that is what I'm trying to figure out?
I think you make a great point, Grandano. And I think if I, if I think of this purpose and it kind of seems to me very different. Uh, the purpose of, okay, if we are supposed to incubate uh, seed SingComDAO and uh, facilitate that, the development of that, then on some level, that purpose is very different to us finding autonomy in the wider ecosystem. Although our energy on some level should be focused towards one or the other, that, that felt like if we're supposed to incubate the seed SingComDAO, then it should be facilitated, that process should be facilitated. Uh, by the foundation or by the allocation of phase two tokens. And that, to ask us to incubate seed SingComDAO and then also to like come up with our own income sources is kind of asking too much, I feel.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. And yeah, if, if it's, if it's us creating the governance document, we're not professionals. And then I would see it as SingComDAO isn't a serious initiative. If we are enabled and we're able to pull connections that the foundation has to have, there's a lot of great minds in there. You can see 2.5% of the phase two allocation goes to Sophia Dao. I mean, Dao is literally in the name of that. There has to be some research done on Dao's and DAO frameworks, I would think. So instead of us starting from scratch and the Ambassador Program being this experiment, whi- which is, which is cool. Uh, in an experimental sort of way, but it's also feeling like.
You've got mute, Gran. Last we had is, you're feeling like?
Win here, we could have really cool incubation meetings every week, where every week we get a different profession. The DAO space, the legal space, and we can start really hammering out these things that'll not only help Singularity Net, but will also help the whole cryptocurrency ecosystem. Because right now, 95% of Dao's are, are bullshit. And there's people that are ready for the next phase of true, some form of DAO projects. And we can seek those people and that can be our ethos, is that we don't want to be another bullshit DAO. Um, and then on the flip side of that, if we want it to be like a, a bullshit DAO, then I need to know that because that's really simple to do, you know?
Well, for a bit of context, um, I, I don't think it's um, purely in our hands as the Ambassador Program to figure out um, uh, SingComDAO. Um, it's, at least the Sing, uh, seed SingComDAO um, body is also um, including the Supervisory Council and including deep funding. And I don't think there's the expectation from foundation side that the ambassadors come up with um, everything there and, and pay for it. If there's externals, uh, like the way you mentioned, that's, it sounds like music to my ears, to have incubation uh, sessions with, with uh, domain experts. That's, that would be awesome, but I, I don't think there's any expectation from foundation side that um, we come up with like compensation for people's time to, to contribute to such a thing. Um. So yeah, I, I, I don't think that's accurate. Um, as what you mentioned on um, expertise internally, um, especially if considering networks of people, uh, something that comes to mind is the Decentralized Governance Summit. That was also sourced on, on network, um. Yeah, what do you say? Um, by, by utilizing people's networks. Uh, so yes, there's definitely a lot of um, connections to experts and I don't think that's, that's purely on us to um, to arrange or to, to put in place. And, and you're fully right to, to call out that there needs to be more foundation involvement there.
Yeah, nice, that.
Making bullshit DAO, moi, not really.
Yeah, it's good, it's good input. It's just, if, if not the community that's gonna help with the SingComDAO, then who? And with the Supervisory Council, I mean, the one talk that we've had in three weeks about it has been organized by the community. So I, I do understand that there's, you know, the foundation isn't looking at it like, well, the Ambassador Program has to do these things. I'm more seeing it as, well, who's, who's doing it? And do we want the Ambassador Program to be part of the purpose of that? Because it sounds like a cool initiative and if not, that's cool too. That's, that's why I'm talking about purpose. Um, if we're just talking about the Ambassador Program, um, that also involves like more communication or lines of communication with the foundation. Um, as well as things like legal and actually setting this up. Or we can keep it how it is where it's kind of like, you know, we're just kind of playing with rewards and experimenting. That's also can be cool in itself. Um, but yeah, I, I get your point.
You know, it's a big topic you guys are talking about. And when I try and look at these overarching topics, I uh, try and put myself in everybody's shoes. So, Grandano, I understand where you're coming from and, and support from the foundation would be good, I, I, if not essential. And I'll get into that in a second. And Peter, I think you're right about expectations where we aren't expected to do everything. We aren't expected to uh, take ownership of the ecosystem and the building out of it, but we are here to support it. And support goes multiple ways i- if you look at architecture. So my idea of a contest uh, for high school students was, I think perhaps the real first big ask I've seen come out of the Ambassador Program for foundation support. And if you watch my video, I even went up to Chan and said it'd be nice to have Ben Gerstel and Charles Haskins to support it. I mean, if we get halfway there, that's a lot of support. But what has the Ambassador Program done to increase expectations and support from the foundation? You know, we've just been getting started, we've just been getting our feet under us. You guys have been here longer, so I only have four months of um, history to, to talk about here. But if they're going to give us support, we have to offer something in return. We have to, you know, show, uh, prove their faith. And I apologize, I was at the dentist yesterday, but uh, we have to prove their faith in us. So we asked them to set up a meeting with a lawyer, I think that's on the books, and I think they were receptive to that. From what I've seen, they are being receptive to our asks. So let's keep asking, let's prove our worth and, and see where it goes. Um, and the other thing on my mind is, what has been the effectiveness of other Ambassador Programs? And you say the budget, uh, and I may be mishearing you, um, we're getting peanuts with the budget or whatever. Well, to get started, it's a pretty good budget, but what are we doing with it and are we backing it up? And I'm curious to see what happens with my ask, because I, I do think there'll be support in one way or the other.
Hmm, well, I, I do agree, um, the, the way you mentioned, uh, it needs to come from both ways. Uh, at the same time, um, this, this request uh, from more involvement from foundation side has been uh, there for the, yeah, it's been uh, mentioned a couple of times over the past weeks, let's put it like that. Um. Um. Yeah, in a way it's on me. At the same time, I can't quite force people to uh, join, for example, these town halls. Um, I am actively pushing out and I think we'll see more and more join, but um. Well, yeah, Grandano, as you put in, in chat, um, some questions have been floated for months now there. Um, also curious what the status of the program is, uh, what status the program is in after May. Uh, the latter part, uh, referring to um, funding, I assume, um, uh, based on the phase two allocations. Um, so far we've been um, allocated uh, the point five percent of the year one tokens of the Supervisory Council. And while it's not formally approved, um, it looks more like a formality to um, get the year two tokens in the same way. Um, but I don't want to put that a hundred percent yet, but it does look more like a formality than a big discussion. Let's, let's put it like that.
Yeah, and even, even something like that, that'd be a decrease in the budget. So just, yeah, it just feels a little bit fractured on, on a lot of these questions that I, that I have.
Yeah, fair. Um, in a way it's um, um, it, it's, it's the way phase two tokens work is the, the allocations um, go down every month by one and a half percent uh, token wise. And yeah, if we want to, to compensate for that, then, well, that's, right now that's not in place. Um, but it's, it's, it's a very valid concern. Um.
Yeah, it's kind, kind of the same with like the Supervisory Council talks, like knowing what's left in the wallet, how funds were utilized in the past Supervisory Council, which maybe that was covered during the AMA, I couldn't make it today. Um, this also helps us know, you know, some people are talking about maybe having five Supervisory Council members or maybe more, maybe less. You know, these are things that require budget and budget constraints. It's part of the SingComDAO initiation document that the Supervisory Council will help kind of map out the SingComDAO, that'll, that would include legal. And these things all take funds. For the Ambassador Program, point five percent in June would be forty six thousand eight hundred seventy five AGX. That'd be a thirty three percent decrease, but if we're going off the second year rewards instead of the third year, it'd be more, maybe it'd be like a fifteen percent decrease or a twenty percent decrease and that'd de- decrease monthly. So the, these are just kind of the foundational questions that I don't really see us talking about that often. That I'm, I'm trying to bring up and make sense of.
Hmm. Well, yes, um, you're um, uh, you're right, it would be the, the second year of allocations. Um, so it would be closer to fifty something than, than forty something, uh, but, but nevertheless an actual decrease and in a way, um, I feel the priority should, right now, uh, should first be at, at getting formal approval of even having that. Um. And then check how to figure out, I don't want to eat in reserves, um, too much. At the same time, there is reserve, which can compensate, but that's not sustainable, right? So yeah, it's definitely a discussion we need to have.
Yeah, on some level, it's a bit surprising that there's plans for us to be integrated into the SingComDAO, but the allocation is not set yet, but perhaps it's kind of just assumed, you know, very casually assumed. Um.
Yeah, it's interesting, because yeah, SingComDAO involves the Ambassador Program. I, I understand there's no expectation, but also like as a decentralized project, you're gonna want I I understand there's no expectation, but also like as a decentralized project, you're going to want community input. When when I say we're given peanuts, I don't mean that the rewards for the ambassadors are peanuts. I'm saying peanuts as in how are we going to get experts and legal involved with such a small amount of budget? That that's that's my thinking on when I say that. It's not. Yeah, it's it's not like maliciously thinking that there's not enough rewards to like reward community if they want to write articles or make videos. If if that's the direction we want to take, that's okay. I I think it would be nice from the community side to see transparently that there are funds going into creating the Sincom Dow from a legal aspect or how to set up the Dow. Um, whether that's like game theorists' perspectives or uh people that create governance documents or white papers or legal counsel for these things.
Yeah, I agree.
I think Peter, um, and the community that this uh this formation of the Sincom Dow uh has raised a lot of money, a lot of um thoughts and concepts in in the ambassador cadre. Uh, we, even though it's going, it's purposes to be decentralized, we really don't know what our perceived role uh is in in this um structure, this this three-legged government structure. So I think it's it's bringing us back to the the beginning of questioning is, you know, what is the purpose of the ambassador program? What uh what does the Foundation and the SC, the Supervisory Council envision us doing? And or is it just that we're being left on our own to figure it out ourselves? And I I think those are some of the the basic questions uh that goes, you know, really goes back to anybody's birth or genesis. And and that's kind of what we're we're, some of us are seeing, this is a rebirth of the ambassador program. And are the resources there for us to accomplish what it is that we we are ideating that we think we should be doing? So I think resources is a big part of it, lack of communication per se with with the Foundation and the Supervisory Council until recently. Um, so the incubation next week is going to be a very interesting meeting, I think.
Maybe the one tomorrow, even.
Uh, sorry, that's what I meant, the one tomorrow.
Um, well, the the to, just for a small comment, I don't want to be the one uh talking all the time. At the same time, I I do get the feeling I should uh respond to some portions at least. Um, there's no top-down instruction from Foundation side or from Supervisory Council side, like ambassador program should do this. That's that's simply not in place. Um, which in my mind is a good thing, honestly. Um, at the same time, clearly, um, every now and then it brings the question like, what are we even doing? Uh, what should we be doing? Um. Yeah, that's, I mean, that's that's the reality. Um, I I do think it's a good thing. There's no clear top-down instruction, but.
I guess.
That's right.
No, 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 sorry, I interrupted, but on some level, it's more elemental, existential, like, like, but what's the purpose? Do we even? Yeah, what's our purpose of existing, you know, on some level?
Yeah, part of it's seeking connection, right? I mean, why are people involved in SingularityNet? Well, they probably believe in the mission they're going for and the people that are working in it. But then when you, you know, have an ambassador program for a year and there isn't really the connection, it's it starts to get a little, a little weird. It feels like, is this thing on the back burner or are people just so busy or what is going on, right?
I mean, yeah, that, or or it's being like silently watching us and then being like, ah, they're ready. Which like, I don't know, like, there's there's part of me that's like, oh, maybe, maybe we like fulfilled this thing. And then they were like, ah, we can, we can count on them, these ambassadors, to do this. But like, I I don't know. I mean, that's just, that could just be probably my imagination, you know?
Well, you know, it it good points, but I think a big part of the problem is in just the term ambassador. Because if you look up at Webster's and if if any of us go into our minds mind of what an ambassador is, it's typically someone that is outreach to a greater community. Yet with this formation of Sincom Dow, are we now becoming architects and constructors and imagineers to figure out how to develop this decentralized organization, whether it's what it, whether it's called a DAO or not? Or is it in that predefined word of ambassador? Um, so, you know, maybe we need to move away just from that term of calling ourselves ambassadors and create a new word that we can also self-define or find a better word. So we don't have that mindset of it's just an outreach program.
Hmm, I do agree, um, the the name ambassador can be not quite accurate. At the same time, um, I think on the on the ideation side of things and and creation and and architecting these these structures, I don't think we're forced to do that if if we wouldn't want to do that. That's also completely fine. I think from a I I think from Foundation perspective, um, there's definitely potential and we can contribute and can can input our experiences and 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 vision on how we would like to see things. And and we can be very instrumental there, but if if we don't want to, we don't, we're not obliged to do so.
You know, I I do believe the Foundation really does believe the ethos of decentralization, letting us kind of figuring it out. So my questions really aren't about what's our purpose or what we're going to do. It it's really, how much is the Found, you know, how much is the Foundation going to allow us to do? You know, if if we come out with big asks, how much are they going to support us? Because it would be nice to use some of the Foundation's resources, some of SingularityNet's resources and talent to get some of our ideas done. Because if we can't go through with it, then we really are just ideators. And we're more of a focus group, and that changes my whole perspective on it. Because if that's the case, then, you know, th- there's no expectation of follow-through, nor should we try. But from where I come from, I'm going to go for the big ask. I'm going to try and burst through the floor above me. And I I'm kind of want to start pushing that and trying to do some pretty cool things if we can get support from around the ecosystem using the talent in place. Because one of our whole things has been not uh doing work twice or um we uh, you know, following up work with work that's already been done. So if there's talent in the Foundation and the ecosystem that we can leverage, I think that would help us quite a bit to actually get things done. That might be beyond some technical capabilities each of us has as individuals. But as a group group in an ecosystem, um, we might be able to pull together and get some pretty cool stuff done.
Yeah, agreed. Um.
I feel like it might be fun for everybody to sort of come up with, I don't know if we've done this yet, but just uh come up with a plan for like what? If if you could have anything you wanted, like, what would it look like? Would it look like a central place? Like, to me, I feel like having a central place where people can come and they get value out of it. Like, for instance, what I was talking about before, where they could get research, they could play a game, they could watch videos, they could, you know, whatever. And that, we don't really have anything like that. I feel like that's sort of like, to me, a first step. Where I want to be able to go to a place and get value out of it.
So Alex, I I don't know if you were in the educational meeting yesterday, but I I kind of dropped a big ask um for the ambassador program and the Foundation, uh, both Cardano and SingularityNet. And and I I doubt it's worked its way out, but I suggested, as we talked about last week, uh, a contest um, using stable diffusion, and it's contest specifically for high school students. So I I'd kind of like your perspective on this next week. But I think if we run a, and I mean, I, I know it was suggested I start smaller, but I kind of came out saying an international um contest put out to all high schools for high school students to run a a image generation contest that Sophia can judge and pick the winners of. The artwork submitted by the students would be returned via NFT to the student and the parents. So my whole point of this is increasing um artificial tooling knowledge, okay? Also creating new Cardano wallets, um, helping educate people about cryptocurrency, NFTs, AI tooling in general. And this would be just the first of many contests I see, if it works. Okay, so you're asking, you know, what would we ask for? And I I think I kind of put my ask out there to see how it's received. But I'd like us all to come together and see if we can accomplish one massive project, because that would be a massive project. And it would help our outreach goals incredibly if we could pull something off on that scale.
Yeah, one of the barriers that I see, like, for instance, in my district, they don't allow any students to use Discord. Like, I can't even use it uh on, I I was able to pull it up today because I had to go through a bunch of hoops um on even my teacher computer, but they don't allow it on um it in the school computers. So like, if they were going to use Mid Journey, for instance, it would have to be from home. They wouldn't be able to do it at school from the school servers. Um, yeah, and I don't, in terms of like getting the word out, I don't know the best way to like let high schools know that this was, you know, a thing. Because it's really, that's the one of the most difficult parts. I get probably five and 10 emails a day from on, that come through, and they're just junk emails of like people trying to contest or selling something or whatever. And I don't even know how they make it through the district filters, but I just delete them all. And I I just don't know the best way. It's really difficult to get the word out to high schools and like have them jump on board. Because the teachers are super busy. They can barely keep up with what they're doing. And to add something like that on, it's just, most teachers won't do it. So it's it's, that's a difficult one. I I'll think about like maybe a path for that, but um, I don't know.
Okay, so my first thought is how to, I hear what you're saying.
So can I, I just want to just be aware of time, guys, that we're nine minutes over time. This is a great, is is a great discussion that won't be resolved now, but it's definitely a great thing for you guys to uh hash out during a workshop, but nice, nice work. I don't want to be rude, but I also don't want to be rude to Teva.
No, that's that's very accurate. Um, and thanks for for that. I was getting lost in discussions in chat on on what is and what is not on the marketplace. But um, yeah, I mean, this is exactly what we should be talking about on um on the incubation work group. And this imagining uh the situation where you can have anything you want to have, I think that's that's a great uh paradigm of of like getting the cool stuff out there. And I do think the uh project, uh, the phrase you suggested, that fits that bill, right? Um, yeah, you're absolutely right, Fly. Let's um wrap up for today. Um, and I do want to then finish with perhaps giving Tefo a little uh space of of um mentioning what we're going to do in the process group.
Sure. Um, yeah, today in process group, we go back to the uh always back like to the main route of looking at as many big tasks as possible, uh grinding through them, what has been done, what hasn't been, what's going on, maybe re-prioritizing it. So we'll see how far we get. It's more like a process computing session again. But yeah, when Peter closes it, I will open up the different zoom, but I will give, let's say, five minutes for everybody to kind of relax, walk around, close your eyes, fresh your mind, and then we'll go hashing out tasks and.
Cool. Um, yeah, thanks a lot. And and also thanks a lot, everybody, for attending today. And I think we touched on some uh really acute uh topics, which really have to hash out over the coming week, weeks. But um, yeah, yeah, thanks a lot for sharing. And yeah, with that, I'm closing up for her now and hope to see you during the process group meeting. Cheers. Cheers.